Guidelines for the hybrid open meeting. On June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. You're missing Zoom for this meeting. Zoom has capability to allow the public to speak in the meeting with attendees. Chair and request that members of the public provide their names for purposes of keeping accurate minutes of the meeting. Attendees must register to participate. Registration link you need to be in. Registration link can be found in the description of the Nantucket Government TV YouTube live page of the meeting. Attendees will join in listening mode. They can click the raise hand button if they wish to speak. The chair will follow those who raise their hand. If they were raised, all questions should be directed to the chair. As a preliminary matter, my name is Susan for PNA Service, the Chair of the Board of Appeals. Can I get to confirm that all members in person? To members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lisa Botticelli, Lisa Allen, here, Michael O'Mara. Mark Corr.
Here.
Staff, put a clear name. Please respond in the affirmative. Nikki Sheriff, here. George Cucci, Aspire K P Law Town Council.
Here.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. John Chesia, engineering.
Here.
John Bracken, Bracken Engineering.
Yeah.
Paul Haverty, attorney for the applicant. See you.
Did you hear that? I'm sorry, I said I'm here.
Didn't, but I could see you. So, okay, thank you. And then the, I don't know who it is, but the person for the Architect Workshop A P D.
Yes, Iram Jobarol and Kelsey Oldham here from Workshop A P D.
Thank you. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Town of Nantucket Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three. Ensuring public access does not ensure public practice of hate and unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Appeals is convening in person and by video conference via Zoom app as opposed to on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Be aware that other attendees and viewers may not be able to see you. Do not screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. And before we turn to the first item on the agenda, I'm ready to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members. If I make each by name, provide any comment, question, or movements, please hold until you're needed to call. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Um, please remember to identify yourself before you speak also to help generate accurate meeting minutes. Um, and for any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state, sorry, state your name before speaking. Um, if members wish to engage in a conversation with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself. And finally, each vote in this meeting will be conducted via roll of files. Okay, let's, uh, the, um, I'm going to call to order this, uh, open meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals is Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at five-ten. Um, would someone approve, make a motion to approve the agenda? Someone, Lisa makes a motion. Second is Michael. Okay, um, we can just do. Um, Alisa. Myself, I, Lisa.
Hi.
Michael. Um, Jim.
Hi.
Okay, so that, um, I don't think, I didn't see any minutes to be approved. The next item on the agenda is designate a sitting board for the Ser side crossing review. So, our deadline is June twenty-eighth. We see you're still with us through that. That's good. Um. So. The advice that I think we've gotten from town council and reading in the bylaws and not done the law is, um, typically that it would be the five full members that would, that would vote, um, is a preference, right? And the alternate votes in the, in the event that there's, uh, absence, conflict, or absence conflict or something else. Um. But I know we've had discussion about, um, that we have three members voted on the original decision. And then Lisa, this was your, you wanted to step the board, so you want to step the discussion on that?
Um, sure. I mean, John's not here tonight, so he would have to mull him back in, I guess, if he is able to sit. Um, I mean, I do think there's some, John, pressure.
Oh, oh, right.
Validity to having an alternative set since he sat on the original application. And I do think that there was a lot of this, you know, there's just a lot of history to this, so I think it makes sense.
Agreed.
So, then that's a good point about John Brusher. He would have to mull him back in, so.
We could be the five of us right now and Mark is an alternate, or John can mull him back in if he had to become an alternate.
Uh, it's actually not a public hearing, so you don't have to worry about mulling.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then if for some reason we get an extension and I have to sit off, then you also have to.
Yeah. So, George, because it's not a, not a public hearing, um, John could just jump back in?
Yes.
That's right. So.
But either way, I, I would designate your voting members on it.
Yeah.
Even, you know, even if it's going to be an associate member, I would just designate it. And, you know, everybody's free to participate in the discussion. But it would be good to have clarity on who is actually voting.
Okay, so did we do that through a motion or do we, or do I just set the board?
I would. Yeah, I, I would do it by a motion.
Okay. Um, Lisa, do you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion that this, do I list the sitting board would be Susan McCarthy, myself, Michael O'Mara, um, Alisa Allen and Jim LaDoni. And they all, the alternates would be Mark Corr and John Brusher.
I don't need to worry about that, but we'll just, we'll have two backups in case we need a.
Right.
Would someone, um, second Lisa's motion?
There you go.
Okay. Okay, so, um, Lisa. Um, Michael.
Hi.
Alisa.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Myself, hi. So that passes. So our sitting board for this will be the five people at the table right now. So, moving on, um, the next item on the agenda is the Ser side crossing final site plan engineering review and review of conditions. Um. So, since we got exhibit four, did anyone have any, you know, deficiencies that they found in that exhibit that they wanted to top it up before we go back to the conditions?
I, I, not deficiencies, but I had a, I had a, um, architectural comment.
Okay.
There's a, all the drawings say asphalt shingle dark rare standing seam dark red. So I would have a strong preference for asphalt rather than all those buildings made standing seam metal roofs. The building permit sets, and you look at the elevation, so these were given to us. Three seventeen four two. What I guess it dated three seventeen, but they all the buildings, they asphalt shingles, standing seam metal roof. All building titles. And I think that all these buildings are going to be natural crown, black windows. I just think that that's standing seam metal roofs are just not a typical roof material that we see on Nantucket. That would be inappropriate. And since we're given the choice.
Does the architect, um,
want to comment on that?
Um, hi, yes. Uh, this is Iram Jobarol with Workshop A P D. Um, the, the design intent in, uh, proposing the standing seam was that uh, we're using solar panels on the roof and kind of create some more seamless look when it's, um, kind of installed between the ridges of the standing seam. Um, it was a sort of an aesthetic consideration and, um, you know, proposing that as an option, as an alternative.
Well, I think my experience with H G C is they do want a black roof when you're going to use solar, so I don't think the light gray rooms would be appropriate. It would be nice to see, um, where the solar is going, but maybe we can't do that.
They're not approved for solar yet.
No, but that would be us or would you? They would go back to the H G C for that then? Because it hasn't been part of the forty B package.
I think it would probably come back to us for part of it and then go to the H G C.
You know, because my understanding is that to have solar use, you.
A five hundred point one.
You have to use, um, flash off asphalt. They don't want any light roof, which is all the time.
And then that'll, that'll get worked out.
As long as it gets worked out and it's not being, that, that they have to go back to H G C, I just want to.
I think, I think they would have to have to change the plan.
Because they don't have any of the other materials aren't determined though. So, again, I wanted to say that I don't want to see a standing seam.
Okay, so we can put that in our, that can be in the. Conditions. In our, in our concern.
Yeah. I, I have concerns about every building being natural and black windows too, but I guess I don't have. I probably can't finish about that. It just seems so dark. Sad. With all those dark colors. No variation.
But I'm not. Other sash black?
The sash is black. At least that's what seems to be proposed. Look at, um, page.
Yeah, there's like a material chart for. A five hundred point one now?
Yeah, probably.
And then there's five fifty, then has door on the schedule?
Yeah. Five hundred. So, but in two types, I think each building might have two types and they have, there is black windows on both of them, but the roofs are different between type one and type two. One's light gray, one's dark gray. But again, I think with the solar, we can defer to the H G C on the color of those roofs.
Hmm.
Um. Presumably this whole development is going to become a, well, I don't know, considered a public way. The majority will be a question.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
That's Mark Corr here.
Hi.
Uh, in exhibit four package on page seven, it shows all of the exterior finishes and the standing metal seam roof is not shown.
Which one is that?
That's exhibit four that they submitted with their hack decision then.
Exhibit four, page seven. So, when I picked up, uh, last week.
Yeah, so eleven by seventeen. It's also in today's package. I find it.
In the renderings.
Yeah, that's right. I picked seven. It's either only asphalt shingle light gray or medium gray. Again, I think that color should be determined just by the H G C when they go back. But I think they should go before they decide their roof color.
And in case they don't do the, for some reason, don't do the solar, we need to say what we think the roof shingles should be.
Yeah, because I do like the variation.
Yeah, I do too. So. I don't think we have, I don't, I don't think we're able, we can, we can voice the concern, but I don't think that we're able to change what the roof finishes are that were approved.
They're asphalt.
Yeah, yeah, but.
But the building permit drawings show metal, standing seam metal roofs as an option. So we can certainly say that we don't want to see those.
Because it conflicts with this.
With exhibit four.
With exhibit four.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we can bring that up.
Yeah.
But is there going to be a review with the H G C?
No, and then last time we talked about it, the point that was made by the applicant was that exhibit four was approved by hack. So there is no review.
Right.
But solar panels not as not being part of this hack application, I think should be reviewed by them.
Yeah, yeah, not on any of the lines.
And presumably they're going to say yes. I just think that that hopefully will affect the roof color because they make ordinary citizens use flush shingles that they would require that here as well.
But I don't even think that goes before.
That would have to.
What?
That would have to.
The solar.
Well, they'd have to, there'd be a change, there'd be a change to the permit and the plans, right? There's a condition in here that references H G C. Yes, I think we're just trying to find. I think it goes, I think we said it either comes back to us or it goes back to H, it goes, either goes back to H G C or goes back to us acting as the H G C. Right, but, so. So, if they decide to do the solar panels, it will come back.
So we shouldn't waste too much time.
No, I think what we can say for the, for any of our concerns, so that the letter, whatever that's going to call would be that exhibit four conflicts. Page seven of exhibit four, um, that lists roof materials conflicts with the building permit set of plan showing metal seam roof. Exhibit four doesn't show the metal seam roof.
Except some of these buildings, they'll be right on the front. Because that faces south.
Yeah. So, okay. Mark, thank you for noticing that discrepancy. Did anyone else have any, um?
I think the only thing we can look at, this is right, is the report.
Madam Chair.
All right, yes.
Uh, Mark Corr here. I recall one of the meetings, we had a conversation that Hack wanted gutters on these buildings. I do not see in the exhibit any gutters or details for gutters.
They were added, Mark.
Okay.
Something where we did see them somewhere.
Yeah, I have them on the drawings that I have here.
Very good.
Four, five. Issue for roof changes. They showed gutters. I think there was one building that maybe didn't show them, but most of them did.
Yeah, I had that in the conditions review checked out as we had.
The community building might not show them.
They'll have to have them to comply with the decision.
Yeah, actually, this does.
I think everything does. It's, it's only A and B building types.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
In the stormwater drainage, uh, documents, it does have, show details for stormwater management off of the roof, so there has to be a gutter system to do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's, it's in the, and it's in the body of the decision as well. Any other, um, questions or concerns for the architect or applicant on the exhibit four? Okay, so seeing none, um, we're going to move on to the conditions and the, um, in the, um, report back from down check in.
Were you able to find that condition yet? Lovely about the.
Oh, uh, let's see. We did, but just give us a second to cross reference it. Let's go back to that in a second. Okay.
This is titled extermination, that the department review and approval by the board of petitions of the building permit.
Oh, yeah, so I had, I just have exhibit four, so as an architectural plan, it's not been provided, but the patent is a good for and it's reviewed. We just, we just, so.
Right, because we can't do anything but review the report.
Yep. Um, for the, um, for seventeen, the landscape impact, um, I feel like that's being taken care of. Well, because they've met the condition, they've met the condition up here, um, and then we talk about it when the meeting, so there was the list of the, um, the natural, the indigenous trees. And they have to, that's part of their decisions, so we have to compile that.
Right, but, well, we can ask John, why does he have this response then that it's highlighted?
Well, because I think because it says that when we're reviewed by a mass license, we need to get that checking up, haven't happened yet.
Right, so it's recommended that we, the board, have this aspect reviewed.
Yeah, and so we had talked about that before, that, that, that would be done, right, but now. Sorry, so back on the H G C question, what is, we're talking about the land, the Massachusetts license, landscape architect is going to review what the objects. That was a condition, you say one seventeen?
It is seventeen.
Seventeen. It's seventeen C. He was looking for the H G C. Well, it was, and then you all asked me about the other. Okay, sorry, I found the H G C one. What's the question? The current question about? This one is about, we're just talking about, who do we have? Like, is there a landscape licensed Massachusetts landscape?
That's, I think John makes a response that's recommended that the board have this aspect reviewed by a professional.
Okay. But I think that'll be, won't that be done like when the plantings are done? No, John knows.
Sure. I think the request was that it had to be stand reviewed and stand by landscape architect, which the most recent study that is, you look at the title block above the right.
No, yeah, I know that, but this was added. Is John there? Can we ask him the question?
I am here, and the answer to that question from my point of view is, and this is for the board to really understand or determine is, I assumed somebody in Nantucket would know what's an appropriate Nantucket plant, and there would be someone within the Nantucket government or whatever that would be able to do that. Or you would have a consultant that's not an engineer, but a architect looking at it up for, for your benefit. Um, their, their architect says it's right, but typically a board might want to verify that with their own consultant or with their own staff.
Do we ask the Conservation Commission? Or Conservation Foundation or?
I thought the hack decision only said that they had to have a landscape architect provide the information, which they did. Um, it's a stamped credential, right?
An appropriate professional determined by the board should review the plan to determine that native non-invasive plants are only, only are proposed. That's number C of the decision. There is something that says that the plan, the plans had to be stamped. That was separate, that would be separated from all the conditions.
I, when I read the thing, the can, the condition, it says by the Nantucket biodiversity initiative in Nantucket Conservation Foundation, are there people there that know that and would look at it or not? That's kind of what I assume. Somebody that is familiar with that would be the one that would look at it at your direction or request.
I think we'd be able to get them. Yeah, I don't know who, I don't know who that person would be. I mean, they, they have, you know, they have to comply with this with this, um, landscaping, with native plants on the Nantucket list.
But it's still.
And I, I'm, I'm just, I don't know, like, is the, if a licensed landscape architect is stamping plans that say that it complies with this thing, I would imagine for your license to, you know, but I.
Well, it's just interesting that it's, that it's still, it's, I mean, it's recommended that we have it looked at, so I don't know why we wouldn't.
But that's two different things, isn't it? A licensed landscape architect is different than the Nantucket Conservation Foundation. I, I feel like those are two different entities, um, and it's not necessarily one insane. Yeah, but the Nantucket Conservation Foundation, they put together this list, but that's not, they're not like a government. They don't have any authority other than.
So can we hire a landscape architect that looks at the list and steps up this compliance?
Um, I don't know.
I mean, it says, it says.
I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, it says in that an appropriate professional determined by the board should review the plans to determine that the native non-invasive plants are only, only are proposed.
Right.
Non-invasive and not preferred by deer is, is important, as far as I'm concerned.
So I think, you know.
Well, the deer apparently eat everything. I don't know, I don't know.
Well, they did a good job. What's the, what's the subdivision that just passed Hawthorne on Hummer Pond Road? Yes, no.
But we don't have, so we're not going to be able to have, this is an interesting discussion, but not one that changes what's here. Like, what it says here is native, non-invasive plants only that are on this list compiled with landscaping, with native plants on Nantucket, blah, blah, blah.
We're not suggesting to change the plan.
No, I just mean, like, I'm just, there's, doesn't make sense, we just don't need to talk about what the plans are, so we just need to determine whether we need someone, whether there's someone that needs to look at it.
I brought it up because I thought maybe there was a professional that looked at like that subdivision in their landscape plan, who oversaw that? Perhaps could oversee this and give it a blessing.
They're not overseeing.
The town doesn't require this at all, right, so we don't really have a an expert within the town, so we would have to
Right, but so this is what, like, I kept asking because you for this specific one, like, there is a, there isn't there, there's a plant list in here somewhere of plantings that they're going to use.
Right, I want somebody to review that and say, yeah, this is on that list. You want to do, I mean, you want to do?
No, but I, I asked Jim several times if you wanted to do it because it was something I know, but there's a list. But there's a, there's
Well, like, we have consultants for other things.
Would be the same.
It would be a consultant for this.
I don't think that it is now June thirteenth that you're going to get a consultant that we can hire that is going to look at this. If there's a list that's, that's, if there's a list that has all these plants, and there's a list of suggested plantings, and somebody just needs to look at the list of plantings and the list that they've provided and see if there's anything that doesn't match up.
I don't think it's that elementary, though. I think we do need a professional person, whether they're a landscape architect, like, that, that's, that stamp landscape architect is pretty specific. Or we could maybe just decide that someone from the Conservation Foundation could look at the two lists and give us their professional opinion as a consultant, just like our other consultants. Now, I don't think it's as easy as a layman looking at the two lists.
Right, maybe Lucinda Young, somebody like that.
Yeah, someone we would
Reputation of
Would the process to get a consultant be a little easier to get the Conservation Foundation, like, that we have to put it out to bed or something?
I cannot think of a single project between the planning board and the zoning board where a landscape architect has been procured or or whose services we used to perform this type of review. There's a decision, excuse me, there's a condition later in the HAC decision that talks about the final and detailed landscape plans being prepared by landscape architect registered in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Blah, 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 blah. That basically has to stamp the plans saying that they comply with the requirements of the permit. So I think at this point in time, you should accept the stamp of the registered landscape architect. With, you know, again, it's a professional credential, it's just saying that they comply. We just don't have time to have someone. I don't think, and I've been, not for nothing, I've been, I've been asked, I, I personally have brought this up since the first meeting about this landscaping tree list that if somebody is concerned about it, could go, should look at it, and so here we are, like, I don't think, there's no time to hire a consultant, even if we would at this point.
Well, would somebody take that on? Then would you just look at the list?
Yeah.
Okay, great, perfect.
And then we can decide if we need to have a professional based on what he wants.
I think if he, I think what will happen is if Jim looks at the list and sees like bamboo, and we're like, bamboo is not native. I'm using it now, it's an exaggeration to make a point, but then we would say, yeah, no, this is not this isn't on this list, and then that would
So how did a Massachusetts licensed landscape architect get on this piece of paper? Who's?
Who? It was probably in our decision and not struck by Hack.
Okay, well, whether or not they really understand the diversity of the landscape of Nantucket is a question.
Sure, right, but there's a list right here.
But Mirko probably does, but somebody, but somebody is stamping her drawings because she's not licensed, so there's that little bit of a disconnect.
Yes, but I think, Jim, if you take, if you go through that, I think that, I think that would, I would feel vulnerable with that. Okay, and can I just point out real quick, in your original decision it does not say this aspect should be addressed by a landscape professional. I believe that's a comment from our engineer. And that's, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's
So BC and the ones that are is on page sixty-seven, there are some that are highlighted in blue. Is that, are those John's comments? But C is black and it's highlighted by the green. I don't know what the green means on this one that was in our package.
So the green comments are ones that things that were for the board to discuss or address is the green.
I'm going to go back to the first document you sent us.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I've emailed a lot with Mr. Chesia and the summary of comments is the one with the green highlights. That's essentially a summary of the post-Hack decision and Appendix A comments, so it's, it's, it's a little bit of a duplicate. But you could, you could almost use the summary and follow exactly along the same way.
So if I go to the first John Chesia thing, there's no mention, it just says native, it is number F, native, non-invasive plants, plus compiled, blah, 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 this aspect should be addressed by a landscape professional. Now, so is that, that's a little different than an appropriate light, determined by the board should review the plans to determine that the non-native in the plant are only composed. So it's changed, and so I don't know.
Well, I think, I think we have Jim look at it and see if there's any, see if anything comes back that's disruptive. Jim's on it. Well, you, you know this stuff. Um.
I need to add in the deer, Michael's deer comments.
Yeah. Um. Same, same thing for the, for the, I thought, under nineteen B for the dark sky compliance. That means we're going to have to comply with the bylaw.
But I know, I just don't like it being after the fact. Because then somebody has to believe so.
But we don't have a, I don't, I don't think
Why don't we have that?
I don't think we have a lighting plan, though.
I know, we should.
Well, because I think they just have to, they, they have to comply with the bylaw. And so hold on a second, it says landscape plan sheet L O four includes a lighting plan with lighting types and location. Sorry, this apartment has been making, that's for street poles, cafe lighting, and ballers aren't allowed, alternative must comply and then must comply with code.
Who would be the appropriate party for that from the town? There's got to be somebody that complies with the bylaw.
We do not perform a site plan review. For lighting, lighting ends up being Yeah, but that, right, I read that, okay. Okay, so this one says gutters I had on the new appendix A, I thought we discussed, things about, so John, in your highlights under twenty-three the gutter, gutters have been added, but you disagree with with the response about the drywells and infiltration systems, can you elaborate on that?
Sure, so there's a couple of things. What, I never saw the architectural plans, I guess they have been submitted, so I never got to see those, so I didn't, I don't know what they show, and if they're consistent with the civil site plans, I don't look for the architecture specifically, but I would look at gutters and roof divides and things of that nature, and generally is the building footprint the same size as the civil plans, things of that nature, I would check. But I never received those and wasn't aware, I heard this evening that, that you do have architectural plans, and I saw in the attachment, there were sort of, like, the I would say more conceptual architectural drawings included in the packet that show the general building layouts and whatnot. What is inconsistent, though, between the site plans and the architectural plans? Up until this latest round, it was unclear to me that these buildings actually had a walkout. And if you look at the contours on the grading plan, there's a spot grade that identifies that it's a walkout, but there's no contours to actually identify where that slope is to create the lower level, so the plans are inconsistent relative to that. Relative to the drywells, I mean, I believe there's a difference of opinion between myself and Mr. Bracken, and when there's that type of a thing, the board will need to decide from what I've heard from Mr. Bracken, the, in the Nantucket, typically you have roof infiltration systems closer than twenty feet, which I recommend to foundations, and that hasn't been a problem because you have good soils with great depth to groundwater, and if that's what you typically do every other case, you can't make a special different case for this. But as an engineer, I tend to have the same comments on projects wherever they may happen to be, but I don't want you to change what you do as a habit within the town. I think a drywell for a roof is a little different thing than a stormwater infiltration system for a hundred-year storm. Under the stormwater management regulations, the infiltration or recharge that's required is a very small number comparatively to a hundred-year storm, it's usually like a half inch, an inch, something in that range. In the Nantucket, for the recharge, you'd need point six if it's sands or gravels, point six of an inch. So drywells are typically sized for something like that, when they're applied as a rate control structure for a hundred-year storm that, you know, can increase the impact to a foundation, so that's why my comment's in there, I'm sure, and I know that Don's going to want to elaborate on that, and you probably should listen to both sides and then make your determination.
First thing I'd like to address was John's comment about the grading around the buildings. We do have a note on our plans to refer to landscape plans for specific rating, and the grading for the buildings were shown on the landscape plans, because that's also where we showed all the handicap access requirements. So
You know what, where the grading plan is?
Well, you have to go back to the landscape plan.
Yeah.
You would.
I'm just trying to find it.
Yeah.
Okay, plan, plan.
I believe it's on, this is your amateur shop, I believe it's on L O two on the landscape plans.
L O two. I'm going to find that, because I don't have it.
That's the ADA.
Yeah, well. Yeah, common space ADA plan is L O two. So there's the spot elevation twenty-two. Yeah, so there's spot elevation shown, it looks like at the walkouts, but no contours or information about how you get from twenty-one point five up to thirty-one at the screen.
So it was spot grades, like, going off the steps, I believe, it would have been we felt that was adequate, because if we tried to draw a contour line, everyone was there, it was very confusing.
This doesn't have a lot of time, I mean, the whole thing, I didn't see anything with contour lines, maybe this was the wrong plan.
It should be just spot grades.
So there's no contour plans.
Well, you have a choice, you can show the contour as a spot grades, and in this case, it's more appropriate to show we did add additional grading, John, I'm sure you saw two of the plans around those areas at the top, and where it started stepping down to make that look clear.
Are there any?
Can I, I'm sorry. If I could point you out to L O three, it's a typical unit layout plan that shows a zoomed-in version of the walkout areas. Which seems to have more information.
Mine, L O three. There's, it shows retaining walls. But it's not a blow-up, right? There's a blow-up of L O A, L O three, that's of the
Correct, apologies.
What about the other buildings?
Oh, that is, that is a prototypical building, it's a one of the residential buildings. Not the clubhouse.
The one that I'm looking at in L O three is the clubhouse.
Um. It's A one dash L point zero three on the set that I'm looking at dated March thirty-first.
A one, I have A dash L O, is that different than A one dash L O three?
I, I believe so, yes. As I scroll down the set, I see an A one L O three, which has further information on the steps going down.
Okay, I found it. But I can't. It's on the back. The unit one layout plan.
Retaining wall, twenty-four inch.
So this doesn't show the where the spot elevation is shown on this plan. Are there any file patients on L A one dash L O three?
Um, I'm, I'm not seeing that, I'm just seeing a detail four that is giving me the height of the risers, but yeah, no spot elevations.
To help clarify, so if you if you look at our grading with, which is street five and you look at each one of those areas, we show the contour lines you know, before it starts stepping down. So we have all the contour lines on here, except the L code where it goes down. And I'm pretty confident that the landscaping plans and architectural plans show how that needs to be treated in order to step down. At our skill for our contour plan, you know, we couldn't get all that information on there. And then we do, we do show a spark rate at the walkout elevation and a spark rate at the top. We're talking an area that's, you know, maybe fifty feet, maybe forty feet, something like that. I don't know if I've ever seen other projects show that before in that much detail. You know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, this is not any other project.
I know, I mean, there's certainly enough information here, you know, to design a drainage
Is there, no, I just want
We're talking about this because our engineer is saying it's not.
Right, I just have a question, is it a nine, eight and a half foot rate change that?
So where is, where do we walk out?
I have the one that
This is twenty-one, yeah, eight foot. And I'm going to because I feel really hard to, you know, again, we're looking at drawings that are this big, it's impossible to see. So, I mean, I just picked this one, that's twenty-nine point two, that's twenty-one, twenty-one point four, this is thirty, so that's
So what's the detail on that? Do we have a detail?
There's one in the landscaping, like I was saying, that should
Is there like a cross-section or?
I don't know if there's one in the architectural plan.
I mean, is it going to be part of a four, four and seven year?
That is actually a very good question. I saw some, just down here, concrete retainable twenty-four inch. This is six feet. Forty-eight inch concrete retainable, eight feet to the Is there any detail of the really tall ones that go? Because these don't have the elevations. Maybe they can, can we request that?
I, yeah, we certainly can do a few processes. The To demonstrate how that's gonna look.
And then obviously, there's gonna have to be a handrail on the top of that. Does that show? Well, no, this, this one is, uh, that that doesn't need one, this one is four feet. Very differential, there's no handle show, there are no protection. Right, so.
I think the protection there is is gonna be with vegetation. If there's no handrail, I think they talked about putting vegetation.
So that would show up on the first one then.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we'll, we have a section that shows how they're all gonna be addressed.
If we want all the walkouts to finish the same above grade. Or no, or at grade from from grade up, when they have, they wouldn't have.
I'd I'd have to check, I can't into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think for safety and code, no, that's. It doesn't appear like there's any planting here, but maybe that's just, it looks like lawn.
I think we can get that answer to you very quickly. And John, what is the, what do you reference this on? The hundred, hundred year. Blood. Yeah, so the Tommy executive requires us to design a drainage based on a twenty five year storm event, which. I think it's like five point seven inches of rainfall in twenty four hours. A hundred year storm is like seven point two inches in twenty four hours. So we designed all these leaching systems to hold the one hundred years storm. Um and so that's what John would refer in, um you know, we have to analyze pretty close development, uh runoff for the hundred years storm. And so, um what I think we don't design a leaching system for twenty five years storm. To hold it all, but in this case we did. Um and as John said, we we definitely disagree on the sole dry well situation, you know, with twenty feet to ground over here. Uh dry wells that we designed in the entire, we've never had to keep them twenty feet away from a foundation. We 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 disagree with that interpretation out of the stormwater handbook, but besides the disagreement. Um because of the sandy soil conditions and the depth. You know, the, the water infiltrates almost vertically, there's almost no horizontal migration of the water.
How have the perk tests been on the property? Just curious.
It's all what we call less than two minutes. There's no clay, it's all uh very previous sand, not only that, but because it's living space down there. You know, all those uh walls are gonna be completely watered, you know, they're not just gonna be damp, they're gonna be watered. Um we've even done what's called a money analysis on some of these systems. Which is a computer program that analyzes the the system, we ran a hundred year volume in it. And it tells us how far out the water spreads, but because of the soil conditions and the depth of groundwater, it virtually goes straight down. Um so we're, yeah, we did, we did make changes uh to the plans that, you know, um. You know, John can attest to, we moved as many as we could. So I think we have like twelve of uh the buildings have all their dry wells at least twenty feet from the foundation. And six of them, we have at least fifteen feet from their foundation.
They show up on these plans?
Yes, they're all on the.
Which ones can you point out, the ones that I'm just?
Um I don't count the exact number, I had my guys tell me how many we met and how many we didn't, and all I know is that six of them are at fifteen feet, the rest. All mean twenty two.
And what sheet is that on?
Uh I'm back on that grading plan, uh she, she five, yeah. You can see all the rectangular boxes. Uh John, I, this, this is way over my head, but. You're, the difference between your way and his way. What is the concern that we're gonna have basements that are flooded? That the runoff's not gonna.
So part of the complexity is that. None of the systems for these houses are actually designed to a specific elevation either, there, it's not. Really done, I mean, I think what Dawn's done is it's like we can make something work here, but. We don't have an invert for any of the ones near the buildings. So we don't know what their elevation is, I suspect that the ones in these walkout areas are probably below the foundation, so you. Probably wouldn't have an issue there relative to flooding the basement, but given the grade change where it's, you know, a nine foot plus drop. From the upper level to the lower level. And there's no contours to show it, there's some steps, but it's just incomplete, in my opinion. And you don't, to to ever fix one of these things where they to plug up would be a nightmare.
Well, if you're saying it's not completed, it's not complete.
It isn't complete.
Yeah.
That's the answer. I mean, but we totally disagree with that. I could, I mean, these are engineering standards, right? I mean, I, yeah, we disagree on.
There's no elevations to tell the person how to build the system.
Can we just get some more?
Yeah.
I mean, can we?
The, these are, these are things that usually we we size the system, they put all the downspouts in, we have our exact location book. It's usually, you know, field adjusted to get the pipes there, work around other utilities and that sort of thing. Yes, we could, we could go, we could spend. You know, ten hours going through and running through all the numbers, which we know are not. You know, we're, we're gonna be out there adjusting everything as the project goes on. And they, they, John, I don't know how you can say that they don't work, they're gonna be buried, we're gonna have gravity, we're gonna gravity feed all of them. And as I said, the lower areas, obviously, those are gonna be below the foundation. I mean, um if you wanna make it, if you wanna suggest the condition that, you know, if they're not twenty feet away, then. They have to be a certain depth, you know, we're fine with that, but. I just, you know. If, if, if you want that information, we can provide it, I don't think I would normally provide it for a client, and I, in my own opinion, I don't think it's necessary at this stage. Of these plans.
Are we only talking about the six that are within the fifteen feet?
I think so, right, John?
All of them.
Yeah, so all of the roof systems, the calculations just use a zero invert and. I get what Dawn's saying, it's more of a design build, you build the thing and then because you have such a depth to sit of groundwater, you know. It's all sand, the groundwater, I don't know what the groundwater is out there, but it's probably down around. Uh what? By elevation five or something? Have you got any wells?
That's elevation ten, so some of these are. Oh, elevation ten, so these are like twenty one.
So if it's elevation ten, then you'd be. If the walkouts are at twenty. Then, and you have to be four feet above the water table, you'd have to have the bottom at nine, so you, you got ten feet or. Eight, nine feet to play with, but. You know, the question I've been tasked with is. Is, is this, is this a construction drawing, is this ready to go? And there isn't, if I were looking at it as a builder. Uh you know, you, it's kind of you're winging it, you don't know what they're gonna be, and so I think it's an important question. I'm not saying that it won't work or that it can't be done, but I think it's something that needs to be figured out, I would typically want it figured out. And I do think it is an issue if you have something that's. Excessively deep in the next to retaining wall or something like that, that if you ever had to fix it. It adds a lot of cost. Now, these things will probably last longer than me, but I'm not that young anymore, but I mean, they do last for a long time. But somebody's gonna have to fix it at some point in time, more than likely, they don't last forever. So it's a concern, and that's my job to give you my concerns to the board.
Okay, so, so we can. We can incorporate, if we want to, John's concerns about the lack of information and lack of elevations. In our. Or the lack of compliance.
With the, the, the rule with the.
Right, the general rules.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean, okay.
I love, John, you're saying, there's a custom here that. This is far more detailed, yeah, there is a custom here, I understand exactly what John is saying, and he is doing his job, and I respect him, believe me. We worked together a lot in these type of projects. I'm just saying, in this particular case, for what we're talking about. I, I, my own opinion is that it's gonna be a waste of time for us to try to do all that, there's enough information here for a contractor. To bid it, to build it, you know, and, you know, we'll be getting into that information as it's being built.
So I think, I think I, none of us are engineers, and I don't think, I don't. I, I don't feel that I'm qualified to make decisions on this minutia, but I think we can call out. In our, that we, that we, that this is noted by our engineer and that. Is, is a potential area of concern, the same as we would with the, you know, the parking and. The trash receptacles or amount um. And mailboxes, right, like um that it's in our report, for lack of a better word, that this is an area of concern and, and. Will be, we'll see how it comes back to us, but.
I think it also has to do with how densely populated this is, this isn't just a residential lot, I mean, every square inch. Is, has to be, we have, it has to be thought through, and I don't think that this, the Nantucket usual, which I've built a lot of houses, I know what the. Nantucket usual is. And I get that, but with something this densely populated, I think it really needs to be. Put on paper and figured out before it starts, instead of just as you go kind of thing.
So in the end, I think that's what we would say to with our letter of concern or whatever we're calling it, that goes to Paul Murphy, because. Correct, I, I could be wrong, but I don't think we can, I don't think, even if we say we agree with John a hundred percent and. And we want all this done, I, I don't believe that they, they, they have to comply with the decision, but I don't believe they have to do all of it, right?
Why, why can't we ask him to provide what John wants?
I think we can ask, but I don't, I think that they've been clear that they, that they don't have to.
Who, who's been clear?
That, that, right, am I wrong about this, that they've?
But we have an engineer that we've hired to review this, and he says he doesn't have the information that he needs, why can't we push back and say, get us the information?
I think we are, and John's saying that we'll leave a ton of information and time.
Ten hours?
That's not.
On the scope of this project?
That's, but that's gonna end up being reworked again?
No, and I understand, I, I don't want everyone to keep struggling with this, I, I, if I can make a suggestion, hopefully it's acceptable to John. We've got the two uh typical units, if we were to do, put that information on two of them. Right, to show and demonstrate that for each unit, this is how it's supposed to be done, this is how it's gonna work. Then I think, hopefully that would suffice, rather than tedious.
As long as John is happy, I mean, he's our consultant, so like, I wanna make sure that he, we sign off on something that he's comfortable with.
And you're gonna do that in a different.
Well, we, yeah, we can do that, I do, I don't have to do the whole site that way.
Okay, so the two tip of.
So can I just suggest, so for this, what I think what. Dawn's talking about, and I think what would be helpful for me to look at, is if you took. The typical unit and did a blow up, put the grades on it, the whole thing, they're all gonna look the same, put the contours, do it at a different scale, whatever you gotta do. And then set elevations for the, the systems. To show how they're gonna be relative to the foundations, because the front one, it's not in the lower area, probably is higher. There's no, nobody's gonna dig a hole ten feet down for nothing, they're gonna put it at the minimum depth, I would assume, so. What you could do with that is. Maybe a table that sort of shows, because they are at different elevations, that these will vary by such and such a feat. On a table sort of thing, that isn't, doesn't require you to redo a whole bunch of stuff, does that make sense?
Um I think we should, we can, we can do, yeah, take a few of the. Uh individual buildings and do that.
You got two types, right?
I, I, yeah, yeah, but I don't.
I, I thought some complied already. Well, that's what I was asking, the twelve and the six, that he. Um John was saying, no, they're not complete, because that, none of them shoot them.
Yeah, he's in. So you guys can work together, then sort of get him the information he feels like he needs, that's.
Yeah.
An appropriate amount of time to spend.
Yeah, I mean.
Again, I don't find ten hours on a project that's, there'd be something, knowing knowledge, be an exorbitant amount of time. But. I don't know, I'm not an engineer, it just doesn't seem.
I mean, I, I understand that too, but I'm not sure my client also wants to, you know, spend time having us. Do these plans when we've already submitted a set of plans that we feel bad, but that's awesome. He's a big boy developer.
So, well, the problem is that our consultant doesn't see that, but, so.
I understand that.
Okay, so he said he'll do that, so John, is that satisfying, does that satisfy your requests or your concerns?
I think that would, I think that's probably could, would address the, you know, the biggest thing, issue I had in general. I think the roadway and the drainage and everything for that, it's all been worked out, it's just, it didn't, it seemed incomplete, but. Tw- on, in between those two things, I would like to see the architectural. Just. Just to compare, I think, I didn't ever got a copy of that, I don't, I guess it's already been done, I just never got a copy.
It's not, uh, it's not for, it's probably the building from its sets that he wants to see, right, that show the gutter locations and the downspout location.
Yeah, we can make, we can make sure to get those.
One more question, John, uh, John, are the. What are the regulations, are they mass D E P regulations, or are they?
Yeah, they're.
So if they're mass D E P regulations, they have to follow the state.
Yeah.
Rules, it has nothing to do with our.
Yeah.
Well, I mean. The, the issue with that, and I'm not trying to put words into Dawn's mouth, but I mean, basically, if you read those regulations, there's. Different people interpret them different ways, I interpreted them that way. Uh he's interpreting them different. And we have a difference of opinion on how that should be interpreted in terms of dry wells and whatever, but I do think that. You know, that interpretation aside, the other information is necessary, you need in, you need elevations. You need the details, you need to know how it's gonna work, which one, how high they are relative to foundations. And if it's below a foundation, obviously, it's not gonna leak in.
So he'll give you that information, and we hopefully that'll, you guys will get us closer to, to meeting.
Yes.
And then agreement on this, all right, um did anyone want, I'm sorry.
Why does it say twenty eight, I only started because it says any future proposed changes, but your architectural features shall be subject to the jurisdiction of the.
Yeah.
District commission. Our district commission, so that would be the solar panels.
Yeah.
Is that the same one that you?
Oh, not on the eight. Uh it's been so long, yes. Any future changes to your architectural?
So we're gonna maintain that.
This was, this was from the decision. Uh this, yeah.
Twenty eight, yeah.
So they're. They want the H T C involved.
Well, that's, that's a reason for changes.
Yeah, because we didn't wanna continue to act as a H T C, well, if there were changes to the comp permit, or like the plans, like the. Like, we want building type A to now be building type C or whatever, we would do that, but if it's, if they wanna change the. Uh if they wanna do the solar panels, then they'll go to the H T C, yeah, okay, so I had a note on, on number thirty, I just didn't know if anybody wanted. Any more information on the trash and recycle sheds, or whether that's gonna just play out as they see how much. Um need they have. I, I don't think I need to see detail of the craft and recycle sheds, but I didn't know.
I think the only thing that Michael had brought up was that some of the locations might restrict um parking.
Yeah.
And I think that that's a good, that was a good point.
And I think, I had a note somewhere that we were gonna do that. As one of our concerns.
Yes.
Like if they were, the rollouts or the.
Yeah, which one was it? Oh, like, was it, was it one of these, Michael?
Four locations. Where it was gonna take up parking spaces and. Potentially slow down the traffic.
Yeah, but if we, if we already have that noted, then we need to go, I don't think we need to discuss it again, it's already gonna be in our. Let's have a concern.
Oh, we actually, well, we talked about adding some bins. As well, so is that, so we don't get another plan that shows those changes, we just write them in our little.
Um I don't, did you guys agree? I don't know.
I wasn't at the last.
Yeah, I think that, I, I think that was just talking about it. Um but I think we could request.
I think I thought. Six by ten dumpster fast area. And then we talked about needing them at these at eight, nine. Three. And twelve.
Okay, um.
We do all that in a safe things.
Together.
Together again.
Um under thirty, oh yeah, hundred, um two thirty eight, um John notes that um. Your response, Don states that the increase is the minimus of, of this is the impervious or services. Also then the scope of the approval, the increase is roughly four percent of the overall site area. And that we need to get determination on this aspect. I just wonder, can you, and forgive me if I've forgotten what the detail on that was, but. Can you just describe why there's a four percent increase?
Yeah, um. It was from adding the hit, going from the H A C plan to the final plans. We had to add a lot, a lot more walkways and handicap ramps because when we started the project. Um we were told we only need one handicap access per building. And then a new consultant came in and told us we needed, well, whatever it is, three floor per building, so we had to add improved walkways. You know, per code in order to be able to get access to almost different points in each building.
So it's the impervious, and there was nowhere to. Carve out, you know, there was nothing, no impervious existing, you could carve out and get some room space to offset that four percent. There's no.
We didn't see an opportunity for it in. I I think the team felt it was within my mind a change from the H A C.
Forty three, so.
Yeah, I had that too. So.
Gonna review, who reviews the.
I thought we had, John, I thought we, I in Leslie or Nikki, maybe you guys, I thought we had. Agreed that um we were gonna ask John to review that S W P P. And if if not, did we need to vote on it and we just didn't, or I? Is that the? Stormwater erosion prevention plan? So I thought the first time around when we went through this. And it said that if, you know, he said if desired, this will be reviewed under separate cover prior to construction. I I thought we said, yes, please, we want you to look at this um.
I can do that. That's something that. Isn't gonna necessarily hold something up. I mean, this effort happens first. If you want me to look at that. I can some, you know, would, uh, if something changed, not to say that this, that that plan would change. But generally, you wait till after this process is done. In case something does change on the plans, that then they change something on that. So it doesn't make, you know, it would make more sense to sort of hold off on that, but. I can, I can move forward with that next.
Well, I mean, if it makes more sense, if it's typically done later in the process, then we should do it when it's, I don't want to have you do it twice.
Right. I think after the board, if the board votes, I I'm not sure of the process on this anyways. I mean, it's a. Approved by H A C, you're going through your comments. I don't suspect that the plan's gonna change too much, and I doubt that the SWIP's gonna change. At this point. Um but didn't know that. During the first part of this, right? So but. Um I think I would recommend when they think they need to get it done before they're ready to start, you know, digging. I should know, uh I don't know when that plan is, but I should know at least two, three weeks before. To get it done. If that makes sense.
So John, when do you think that time would be?
I'm not really sure. You know, you need a contract that shows and a lot of other information like John said, but. I think uh John will confirm that the SWIP. A lot of the SWIP is a regurgitation of all the other great system information and erosion control and that sort of stuff. It's in an E P A format, so. So that's why I think, that's why John, I think he's saying it's not gonna change the project wherever he comes up with on the SWIP.
Forty four eighty compliance. Um I had discussion needed under for forty for this one. We're in line. Okay, so we'll look back. That goes back to twenty three. Um I was gonna say. So um ninety seven C. Does anyone have anything before that?
Oh, hold on.
That's. The modification, I was right. This one um.
Yeah.
The phasing, that was a question.
That 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 is was submitted.
Yeah.
All that's scheduled.
Right. So, but the phasing plan is just. There's really just. Was really just a. With the one phase, right?
No, 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 there's another one that was just submitted. And I highlighted it.
Well, I mean, sorry, I mean, like the the um the the cleaning, I guess.
Right, there's five phases. And they break it out to which building here you built when.
So, so John, you don't have. You don't have copies of these plans that you've got.
Yeah, that's.
I think I have a copy of the phasing plan. I mean, I did take a look at them in a jet, very general way. This. The phasing plants include like uh. Drainage calculations per phase. I mean, it's, they're not. Super complicated. I mean, I, I think it's mostly. Most of it really relates to which sections of the um. You know, the buildings get built when. They're gonna put in, I think most all of the infrastructure first anyway. And then they'll fit in the buildings and some of the parking areas specific to the buildings and things of that nature, phase by phase. I mean, I don't, I think that really the look of that is more. For the, the board's interest is how the project would be phased and occupied and potentially public safety officials. Input on that, because you need to have access once people stop occupying buildings. For all the, you know, necessary purposes, so um. I think that. That really is what the board, if you want to discuss something, you may want to look at it to discuss those aspects, and if. Necessary, and I know it's time's tight on all these things, but you know, has anybody from the fire department, police department, do they have any issues with any of these? You know, the way they're doing it. From what I understand, they know they're starting at the front and working their way back, so. You change that?
To both. I could see, at least if you start at the front, then people. Occupying it aren't driving through a construction site.
Right.
But the negative is that if you're at the back. And you start at the front, let me think, I'm just trying to think, what is that?
I I.
Well, the that you'd be driving. Through an area that's inhabited with children flying outside.
With construction vehicles.
Construction's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would think that that's the proper way to do it, start in the back.
So the construction vehicles. Don't go into the area, that's.
That's right.
I don't hear, may I ask a question?
What's the purpose of the temporary earth berms along? South Shore Road.
Uh just to provide screening for the site. So they're gonna be about fifteen feet high. When they, when they strip it, they're gonna put um the topsoil in that area seeded. And vegetated, and then that that will be the last time.
And then will. Everything else get um. Any fill, everything gets taken off site?
There are specific stockpile areas that we've identified on the plans along your certain drainage areas, and that's what the politics.
Okay. And um. And and fencing.
It's still fencing and construction fencing is showing in the uh basic plan that John referred in the beginning.
Um what about relative to this phasing plan? There'll be, obviously, you would put fencing around. Between phase one and phase two. To a construction of phase two, you'd have fencing around phase one.
We don't have any plans that show that, but I think we have notes, um general note. About fencing and erosion control as needed.
There's also K, it actually goes on. My construction schedule, you're gonna find the sequence and approximate dates of all key stages that are submitted, so you want to group up the board or instead of the day. Definitely, we haven't seen any of that.
We don't have, but I think, did you talk about that that was gonna come to us either?
We don't, yeah, I'm gonna um. If I don't have the construction schedule, I wasn't given a construction schedule at this event, so we still need to get that into, but this. The A W L A's plan set does show, it is, it is broken down into the phases. And temporary drainage bases and so forth, we why.
Let's hear what.
If you think so, Tom.
Sheet one to four, all of this is that. And the sediment erosion control plan.
Yeah. Phase one and then phase two is. Oh, you said where you gotta, can you revise it though? Because this is the old thing we experiment the road. At least what I have.
You just have to re- renumber them and give them based on what you just gave us tonight.
Well, I, I'm not sure about that, but I'll get back to you on it, because I think. Um the entire site is gonna be stumped and cleared and stockpiled, the phasing, the five phases that we gave you. For the building instructions, so that. These grading plans are still gonna apply, temporary grading basis is still gonna apply.
But would you just wanna make the buildings that are being built under phase two. Dark and show them on this. Sheet two of four.
Yeah, I mean, we can make that.
Yeah, I would just make that so it coordinates with.
Now, now that I look at it, you can incorporate the berms, so that's gonna have to be updated.
Yeah, I just wanted.
John, one more time, sorry, how tall are the berms gonna be?
Uh we figure it about fifteen. I mean, they don't have to be fifteen feet. If there's any suggestion that I can take back. You know, just, I think with the size of the buildings and so forth, we just thought fifteen feet. Was seen reasonable.
I'm just shooting from the hip here, but. You know, would it be tempting for kids to like sled down this thing? I don't know. I think maybe are there gonna be. Fences around it? It seems like. Something I wanna like take a dirt bike outside of it.
There's gonna be stockpiles on the site anyway.
Yeah.
Plan for stockpiles on the site, so. I guess that depends on.
I guess I've just never seen that before.
Yeah.
So I'm unfamiliar with how that is gonna look. I think it'll be, I know, it would attract.
As long as they spray, which they're gonna do, it's gonna be.
Yeah. And there's been, there's ones at um. The development next to the playground of Arnold South Road, they've had giant piles of dirt, but I haven't. I don't think they've had any problem with, and then across the street from where I am, sand pickers have giant piles of dirt. I mean, it would have been. If they had been.
Yeah. I just wonder if there's, if there's any danger, just like there would be danger if there was a hole there. You know, I don't know if there are kids living in the area, and I don't know, just.
I won't, it won't be able to get in. Cause the 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 access will be gated.
Okay.
At night, I mean.
Right, but I mean, I just, it just begs for. I don't know. I think that, yeah, maybe they should be surrounded with fencing or something. It just seems. Like it could be some kind of a hazardous situation at fifteen feet high, fifteen feet is pretty high. That close to the road. It's, you know.
Feels like the whole site might be sort of hazardous zone, maybe it's gonna have to be policed. Yeah.
Did you think? I mean, the whole thing is gonna be an enormous construction site, the whole star.
Thank you.
I would, I would think that. You know, in that location. Where you've got what probably a thousand yards of room. That you're more worried about shrinkage than. It's going, climbing up the, the top of it.
Okay.
It's also a noise barrier, and it's gonna have to be sloped at like a three to one slope, you know, so so that it won't erode, you know, so. It will have to be some five, twenty two.
Yeah.
So will we get a construction schedule? The decision says that they have to provide one. Um but it also asks for. Identification of contractors, field engineers, construction managers, surveyors, all these specialists. It calls out for stating of different things, placement of sediment and erosion controls. So I think that's something that's going to come later. That's something that's going to come for your review.
But I'd be nice to have the construction schedule, like just a, an overall sense of timing on some of the stuff.
I mean, usually for large scale projects, we do have one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Can I assume that anything that gets buried on this site is going to be documented on an asphalt plan?
Mini utilities.
Yeah, and and drainage.
Yeah.
I think that's in the.
So the construction schedule can be, at least the one that we would hope to get, to be somewhat more general than all of the detail that's required. Presumably, you don't have. A lot of these.
Well, they probably have a lot of them. But we know the contractor, right? We have the construction managers, we have another surveyor, we have another wetland and biology specialist.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm, I'm saying we'd rather have something that's seventy percent. Four seven, that's a hundred percent.
I think for me, it's mainly the timing.
And project, project and timing.
Yeah. And as much of this information they could fill in as possible.
So um ninety seven M announcements, we're gonna go to. To yeah, to uh town council, if there's any um. Oh. I just had a question on P, where it questions about. Um all zoning lines have been identified, I'm finding for reference purposes, and then the response indicates that district setback lines have not been included to avoid confusion. I just. What's the?
Because that must be the zoning districts, because.
Right, instead of having a regular zoning, just having a setback that would exist.
Probably, is that right?
Yeah, so.
Why put the ones on there?
Exactly. I don't know how that just keep get, get carried.
Okay, so that doesn't, that's just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. There was one comment about his details of the retaining walls.
Yeah, I, I saw that.
I think they should be included for these walkouts, you were saying.
Thirty seven. I just have. Landscape plans indicate, right, if you have a detailed, indicate reinforcement.
Oh, we were talking too about the ten foot walls not being at all detailed.
So, Don, we have a note that it says that structural details approved that could be provided on the construction plans. So it's just, my note was just timing on that.
I was trying to find out where you are.
So it's page thirty seven ninety seven Y. And it says the final plan shall include the location and design, including materials to be used of all retaining walls to be used within the project. And the landscape plans indicate the location of the retaining walls and a detail, but the detail does not include the reinforcing although called reinforced concrete wall.
Can you just add that to your?
Yeah, we can. I mean, that's not my department, but I'll get somebody from the, we have special engineers with the. Yeah.
Okay, so this. Okay, so. Um, was this one of three? I think it's D that says. This talks about. The plans don't indicate the electrical, electric telephone or cable connecting to units, their cross sections for the. Round section of roadway and the section pitched to one side that indicates sewer water and cable utility locations. So. Is this satisfied then, John? Talking about, it says the utilities are proposed to be underground and should be addressed in the final construction plans.
So, the way the decision. Was written or the condition was written. I believe it was more referring, I mean, these were carried over from when there was actually a subdivision road.
Mm-hmm.
So, they did actually do a profile of the main road in loop that showed the grades and the. Vertical curves and all of that stuff, stationing, uh, which I think is helpful for the construction end of it too. But they didn't show every single utility within those profiles. There's enough information, I believe, to construct those utilities, but they weren't all on the profiles. So they showed them in the cross sections. In my opinion, I think you, you're okay on what's there for that. I think it's enough to build it. But I did want to just highlight so you knew what you were getting and what you didn't get relative to that original condition.
Okay. Right, does anyone feel that it needs to show more? No, okay, so it seems like we're okay with, sounds like we're okay, we're okay. Um. And Lucy, you got a question on E?
Well, did that talked about.
So this is one, one of three E again on page forty one. So, a plan and elevations of all proposed signs, including the entranceway sign. Um. Design size and location of any entrance or roadway, well, there's no.
It's maybe just how. It's more for public safety, right? If there's a fire.
I guess.
I mean, they're going to know where this place is, but how to get to the right building, how they're going to sign those buildings so that is clear.
So is that, is that for us or more for the fire department?
Well, it just says they should be addressed in the final construction plans and we haven't seen it.
So.
That's probably an architectural thing. I don't know where they're going to have the buildings specifications, but.
We should see it so the fire department can weigh in on it.
And the only side that was showing the stop signs, we really, and I don't think HPC allows. Entry signs, you know what I mean? Even though some may be floating around on some of the graphics, but.
Sure, we're comments past one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think some places.
Something in sign code that we might have saw, but, you know, again, that's more of an architectural landscape thing, but we can. I'll, I'll check with the team about the signs.
Yeah, I get it, well, yeah, more about.
You know, and I think you're, there's, I do remember that you're, something about that, that people do it, they have like the rocks with the signs and things like that, but they, there is something that we need to see about that, like, I don't know. Okay, so you'll reach out.
I'll reach out, yeah, find out how we want to present that.
Okay. I just to add, I know in Richmond, they name the buildings, so that's all the building. Okay, so the one sixteen that'll happen sometime, that's a submission. Come into the board when we burn the fire to your final acknowledgement of the system's zero final detest of that, that you're done, all scrapping things, that is, so things are going to be dead for plans, from things that are being involved. Do we, John and John, do we, for one twenty one, do we need to see a calculation for specific building sprinkler systems?
I think that would be the, I think that would be the fire chief more than likely. Or for his, you know, that's a. They usually test it and everything, so I would think it's them.
One four. Okay, yeah, so on one forty, this is about the construction equipment being parked and. Um, the, you know, we talked about the portions of the construction and parking area within a hundred feet of the proposed catch basin inlet. Um. So then the common here is the parking area should be adjusted to be one hundred from proposed catch bases in phase one, all the other phases comply. Um.
We don't change it till they all comply, but I, I can bet that. It's going to have to be modified with the berms now anyways.
Okay. Okay. Uh, appendix A. And then.
Soil testing will be performed, but it sounds like it has been performed, is that right, John?
Uh, we, yeah, we did perform them originally in that area that was cleared in the beginning. Um, to get a representative sample, but we do have to perform more on each individual subsurface system.
So is that information you need now, John, or no?
I don't think for this site you need it now. The soil conditions are typically pretty consistent out there. I mean, if something. I mean, you can find odd things, I'm sure, um, and if you do, that would affect the design at their risk.
Right.
I mean, if you found a spot that was all unsuitable soils or randomly something was buried there, they'd have to deal with it.
Yeah, they have to do that.
I may go off script for a second, I have a question, a general question, and I don't know who. It should be directed to. Um, but overall, what is the timeframe of this project once it's started? How long until it is complete? Or is it expected? How long is it expected to take?
I thought somewhere it said three years.
There's this condition in the, it's no longer than three years.
No longer than three years, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so the issues with the roof and yard infiltration systems, that's what we were discussing under twenty three, you're twenty three, and we're going to get more information on that, so.
What was, this should be clarified. The response says that the proposed oil grid separator.
The proposed oil grid separator is an adequate capacity to control any potential spills. The rest, Don should further document this statement. The larger fuel spill would likely be heating oil, delivery oil, heat support, which could be larger than the. Passive electric or propane, propane is proposed, the typical vehicle gassing would be smaller than the real lot. So. I guess, are you doing heating oil at all?
No, it's not doing.
Okay, everybody knows that was three years, I just missed it.
So. No oil, so we don't need to, so. I don't know. I mean, did anyone else have anything to say for me? Does anyone have any other? Comments? It's ten and seven. Yeah. I think that would be good. So, Don, you have some action items. And we'll try use action items, go back to your team about. Um. And then we should try to meet again when. Um, Don's able to get us that information, and then we can. Keep calling down this list. Yeah. We're going to try to figure out a time to spread down.
I mean, this room is open most of the time. Except for.
And PHDC is not doing Thursday afternoon meetings, or at least there may be a future.
It was something Thursday is not going to work for a while. I'm also.
Well, how much time do you need, John, to do your stuff? With John for that.
My, my stuff I can get in a week. The protection from America, I hope I get that from her in a week. The structural protection is probably going to take more than a week, but. Um.
But so then, do we have to have all our comments written up and reviewed by the twenty two?
You have to complete your review by the twenty eighth, so.
That mean we have to, so.
I, I know the applicant is anxious for to complete your review and so they can apply for. Additional permits.
So who writes up, who writes up the review for us?
Staff? Yes, we'll wrap that up. So. I mean, you guys, that could, that process could get started now, some of the things.
And you have your extensive list of.
Interesting, so. Yeah. Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's just notes. I mean, I think some of them are getting, it's getting, they're getting pulled down.
Right.
As we, as we go, I should go back through and see what's so. Um, all right, so what, so do we want to try?
It sounds like we're going to have to finish up by.
Next week.
Yeah, and we have. They're going to need a week, and then we.
I would like to have your. Your draft. Response, your draft letter, whatever you want to call it.
Hmm.
Um. Written for you to review on the twenty eighth, and then you can make adjustments accordingly based on whatever happens at that meeting. Between, and then to be tweaked on the following day or so.
When's the deadline?
Till twenty eight.
Two weeks from.
Also, we don't have to have it complete based with all of our comments integrated by the twenty eighth?
Well, I don't know how you would have it finished if you're meeting on the twenty eighth, so talk about. Have a draft. Yeah, yeah, I think we should meet before the twenty eighth, because if we meet on the twenty eighth and we don't finish, then it's in the way.
Why we need the, the end of. Either the twenty third or the, or Monday, the twenty sixth. That gives two days to review, you know, the.
I can do the twenty third or twenty sixth. I cannot be drawn to twenty first. Let's do the twenty sixth then, for Monday.
Which time will we start?
I can meet anytime on Monday, twenty days.
Joe prefer, um. Eleven, are you free on Monday, John, lunch? Twenty six, twenty sixth of June, would you be free?
Yes.
Any preference for time?
Um. I'm open, whenever, whenever everybody can be there. I, I don't have anything in my calendar right now.
What about one? Perfect, great. Will you somebody?
Can, can you make it noon if you're going to have me there?
Um.
It's better for me.
Bring a set lunch. Do you want to set the limit until, um, till three or?
Well, I think we should just do it as long as we need to, since we only have two days. Well, I would say the four o'clock, you know, like.
Yeah, I don't think it would need that long.
Yeah, I think you should be able to wrap it up.
But then we would be able to meet again on the twenty eighth of vote.
Well, this is not a public hearing. I mean, we, we can say like, let's block off two hours or three hours, but we can still.
Right, and then do we have to just block out a couple hours on the twenty eighth just to do the final vote?
Yeah.
And the twenty eighth then would be a Wednesday.
Yeah. All right, so the twenty eight, each year. Um. Maybe later in the day, we do that. On the twenty eighth, or is that the?
As long as, yeah.
Okay.
Same locations?
Well, you get any location. They left one, they left two, two o'clock on the twenty eighth, yeah, yeah.
So if we're limiting some Monday meeting, just other things going on. Are we saying noon to two, or we're going just as long as we need to go on Monday? I think it's noon to three, maybe.
Yeah.
So that's. Here.
What is that? The game I'm in, SuperLivia, I should want.
Extra innings.
The game I missed for Olivia, she had extra innings, and they won, so just I get to. Oh, good. Okay. Um, anyone have anything else before we adjourn? Someone wanna make a little return? Second, okay, so, um, follow me to make a favor of returning, Lisa, hi, myself, hi.
Bye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, everyone, thank you. Do you have this one? For that.